...the stakeholders, they all have received realization of this advocacy. Right honourable Speaker Hassan, you are a very high ranking member of this House of Assembly. All the agreements of the Constitution so far been achieved. You have been a part of it and a key member to this Actuation. It is to this end that now under your double leadership, we are able to achieve this overall strategy. And with that, I would like to give much of the time, Hassan. I would like to have brought to the speaker to the other, the other committee, to honor the continuous coordination, to the agreement for the prayer and opening of the assembly. Right honourable Speaker Hassan, honourable Speaker Hassan, to show this.
Ah, Uzulai, I'm Shikar Rijim, Speaker of the House of Assembly. Right honourable Speaker, I'm Ziya Masuk. Ah, here, members of this committee, my first step, I am the president of the prayer. My honourable member presenting the law, Mr. Speaker, honourable Speaker. Ah, honourable, ah, we are now going to, ah, sign the present agenda, which is, ah, opening speed by this, ah, right honourable speaker, Ziya Masuk, the president.
How do you like, Sir Yadi, Mr. Speaker, Speaker of the House of Assembly? The right honourable Speaker, honourable Speaker Hassan, the majority leader. And the members of this important committee, the representative of the state highest, the area of vision, the man of vision, the representative of the area of honor. Distilled which participate to this public hearing. Good morning. I'd like to begin by thanking Anna Sona Olaala for sparing our lives, righteousness. This historic day for the content of public hearing of the fifth alteration of Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. I wish to welcome all our invited guests to this honorable House for making time out of their busy schedule to honor our invitation to attend this public hearing on the review of the Constitution. We may recall that this honorable House was the recipient of our correspondence from the National Assembly conveying the alteration of forty-four bills that require our deliberation and subsequent voting for concurrence of the National Assembly. And extending this important national responsibility. The honorable House had held series of meetings, including stakeholders engagement for the purpose of collecting public input, approbation advice that will help in addressing some of the gaps identified in the Constitution. Also, the representative of the people in honor, as representative of people, are in honor of the principles of openness, inclusiveness. The honorable House is always keen to subjecting any critical bill under consideration to public hearing. This is in our effort to widely consult with the members of the public in taking the right decision for concurrence of the National Assembly. Distilled which guest, ladies and gentlemen. The new values contribution received from participants during previous public hearing have been of tremendous importance to the honorable House. They did not only ease and facilitate the passing of the bills, but also, more importantly, they added value and credibility to our voting process. Accordingly, I want to use this podium to honor all the participants in this to direct their presentations, comment and observation on the subject matter. On our parts, as these letters, I want to assure you that your bills will not only be appreciated, but will also considered with utmost respect. We shall therefore continue to be gratefully indebted to you for your interest in our legislative processes. At this end, I wish to thank this excellency, the Executive Director of the House of Assembly, Dr. Abdullah Umar Dadi, the Royal Academy of Islam, for the support he has always been giving to this honorable House in its charter of our constitutional responsibilities. Equally, on behalf of all my colleagues, all my members, I wish to extend my sincere appreciation to our beloved partners, especially in fact for the support and critical guidance we are receiving at all times. December, I would like to extend my gratitude to our respected regional rulers, civil society organization, and all other partners for sustaining bilateral engagement. We thank you constantly, and we look forward for more bilateral engagements. Lastly, while hoping for a successful deliberation, I hope that you will continue to honor our invitations whenever any other bill is proposed for public hearing. Finally, the Lord Allah, the Almighty, it is my pleasure to declare this for public hearing on the fifth alteration of Constitutional Alteration. I thank you for this, for this all, thank you.
Right honourable Speaker. Right honourable Speaker, the next program and agenda is item number four, which is alteration overview of the bills to be conducted by the fifty speaker. I challenge this other committee.
Ah, right honourable Speaker, I wish to assert this truth. Also, another engagement official again that I would like to make my leave until the right honourable Speaker, Speaker Hassan, will leave.
Ah, among the other, we are going to such which wants better or better. But before then, we have to put less, to gain also much, for our primary, also. One, we need total silence, please. Secondly, ah, so that you have set, ah, concept, everyone to push his headset silent. Secondly, I say we get to ready the agenda, put it silently. We are going to silence, and by the way, I do silence, because of that, the others. Okay, okay, okay. I said before, to someone, ah, the president, I would like to just to start the Constitutional Review, which I guess about the people, the session. The session include the broi, number one, bills establish local government. Bills establish, bills are number one, bills of grace, the state joint local government and provide for special account, it should be get off. Get all allocation to local government council on the capital account and on the government of state and for the related matters. Number two, bills establish local government, as it's the government can assist the democratic existing tenwa. Number three, bills to sign the name of the local government, like a deep poor rock north and a deep poor south local government, able to stand the name of which local government in council, able to sign the name of a border north and a border south local government area, able to sign the name of what is like local government of larger sets, able to correct name, as it will local government area, able to correct the name of Odiya Matfo local government, able to provide for the financial independence of the House Assembly, ah, able to complete passing today or comply with legislative summer. Number eleven, able to relate the case section and inauguration of members select of National Assembly. Number twelve, able to institutionalize legislative bureaucracy in the Constitution. Number thirteen, able to actively provide for procedure for passing and Constitutional Alteration where the prison was called assignments, assignments. Able to provide procedure for overriding the practice date of the rest of the morning yet. Number fourteen, able to provide for procedure of movement to the side of the office of the legislature. Number fifteen, able to provide pass petition or able to provide petition for the side of the office of the National Assembly. Number sixteen, able to establish better revenue courts, the revenue court of the state. Number seventeen, able to provide certain officially for timely dispensation of the suspension of justice. Able to provide timeline, what more than most legal and criminal cases are here and done, turned out, tried and at the court, in order to eliminate unnecessarily the justice administration and delivery. Number eighteen, able to ensure continuity in the time and age and the future of the officially officer of studio courts and records. Able to delete provenance to the provision of criminal courts, criminal courts, criminal procedure acts, criminal procedure of evidence acts. Able to resume and periods of interrogation, began in the conversation, time, retirement, reduction of decision, reduction of decision and rapid. Then, able, another point of culture and honor proceeding to be conducted, especially online for any media platform of knowledge and innovation. Twenty-four, able to expand the interpretation of judicial, for judicial bodies, which include courts, for trials created by an act of National Assembly or state of the House of Assembly. Twenty-five, able to provide for the post-hold qualification of Saka Paray for the National Judicial Council. Twenty-six, able to any policy sound to get healthcare, education, protection and services beyond, and able to impose a payment of four years in the process of accommodation of movement, judicial officers by the state, judicial service mission. Ah, bill, number twenty-eight, able to group jobs of the National District Court of the Constitution of the National District Court. Twenty-nine, able to, able to move the approach from exclusive respective list and concurrent respective list. Able to, that, able to delete prison in exclusive respective list and resident in as correctional society, concurrent respective list. Number twenty-two, able to move very well from exclusive respective list to current respective list. Twenty-three, able to allow states to relax policies and to move that the state area of our national views. Twenty-four, able to improve ban any acts on exclusive respective list. Twenty-five, able to provide specialty to one, the National State House Assembly. Ah, able to provide for electric action for human, to calculate and destruction. Able to provide criteria for qualification and admission of the state in Nigeria. Able to expand immunity to respective and judiciary companies. Able to specify the time, who's most executive should present to the National Assembly any ticket between the capital and the any other country for that. Able to specify the periods, who's most present or gone up states, present a cooperation for the National Assembly or State House Assembly. Able to require present or gone up, gone up to submit the name of as in the letter, as ministers or machines, go to party day, acting or taking the role of the office of the nation, by the Senate or State House Assembly. Able now, ah, just, able to group present, present of the State, the membership of the National District Council. Able to establish such as, able to empower the National Assembly and the State House Assembly power to summon the president of the General Department of Nigeria and the Donors of the States, and support issue in the National Assembly, for the National and State House Assembly. Able to reduce the periods, who's most present or gone up, the same try to draw upon for the facilitator revenue fund, the asset, the cooperation acts, the smart demands. Able to replace the facilitator revenue fund, given facilitator tax revenue and facilitator revenue fund of the state government. Then, ah, unless, able to access, establish office of a hundred dollar, a relationship, separated from the office of a hundred dollar, a relationship. Then, unless will dis, able to specify the timeframe of one of the population system. Then, ah, unless will, able to provide for sets of the nation and the state of the state, the state of the state that is by the president, then able to improve format of National Assembly in the hands of the states. Ah, able to enhance existing provision and the commission of the state of the country. Then, able to provide independent, the presidential, government, National Assembly, State House Assembly, and the local government administration. Then, able to correct the level of the determination of boundary of the state of the country. Then, able to make free of master and intense education and natural rights of the sitting on the arts of the Constitution. Then, able to require government to arrange this for sure right of books, security in Nigeria. And the last one, there is, let us start the co-function of the Nigeria Security and Security Council. Ah, this one, this other, this other area, which are, was a city, the National Assembly for Brazil, ah, which is good for, the House Assembly, guys, the president, which give you a lot of issues, this area, which I would like to.
Well, the other, 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 the
The submissions of the Nigerian National Congress are dispositions of the positions of organized labor in Nigeria. Over the past decades, the Constitution amendments are reviewed. Overall, the position and recommendations of labor are yet to be worked with promotion of good governance and one care of all persons in our country on the principles of freedom, equality and justice. Our persuasions are reflected in our positions aligned with our faiths in the Nigerian nation and the abilities of our people specifically the working class to build a great country. We also concur with the submission of a memorandum submitted by the National Leadership of NRC Abuja to the National Assembly Ado authority for the review of the 1999 Constitution on September twenty fourth, twenty twenty, which contains all labor issues and social equality, cultural and political issues. The submission of Congress's Council of Assembly will dwell on three issues namely local governments of local government autonomy, judicial autonomy and legislative autonomy for the purpose of his. Local government autonomy. There is no guarantee the fact that the current local government structure in Nigeria is weak as it is tied to the upholding of state government. Local governments in Nigeria lack the capacity in the reputation of government professionals activities that were under their legislation. There are many governing projects that the current federal and state structure cannot effectively carry out. Our recommendation enact enact in our constitutional provisions that prohibits state governments from abusing the state local government joint accounts and or affect the immediate scaring of the state local government joint accounts. Incorporate into the 1999 Constitution the recommendation of the revenue mobilization, allocation and fiscal provision that ten percent of the state internalized revenue should be paid to local councils for grassland development by the state governments and state house of assembly. We have outlined recommendations under that, but due to time factor, I would turn to judicial autonomy. Background, passion to the ideals of equality before the law, balance between the administration of justice and its public sufficiency, especially in view of the fact that justice should not only be done, but must be seen to have been done. Organized labor voluntarily recommends fiscal autonomy and independence of the judiciary. Part of our recommendations are state judicial council. In light of the recent submission of a bill with the number HB ten sixty two seeking a constitutional amendment to allow for establishment of state judicial council, which when done or rejected this bill aim at destabilizing Nigeria's judiciary in its entirety. Legislative autonomy. The historical development of democracies all over the world to organize the role of the legislator as the custodians of the will of the people and the sovereignty of the state. The presence of the Nigerian Constitution demonstrated to remain due to appreciation of this time on advance of the democratic humans and principal separation of powers by clearly delineating the power of the legislative branch government in chapter one, part two, section three of the 1999 Constitution. Furthermore, following the first articulation of the 1999 Constitution, which amends section one two one, section three of the Constitution and which provides that any amount standing credit of the House of Assembly of the state judiciary in the consolidated government point of the state shall be paid directly to the state bodies respectively. Our recommendation, first compliance with the first articulation was addressed to section one two one, section three of the 1999 Constitution, which grants full autonomy to the state house of assembly. Constitutional provision guarantees that under general of the Federation the power is deducted from source the money due to the legislators and judiciarys of state from the monetary allocation of states plus a relative spell to grant financial autonomies to the two arms of governments. So we have about nine pages recommendations which we have already submitted the ten quarters of our memorandum to the secretariat. So we appreciate the state house of assembly for this public hearing to hear the opinion of the people and we are optimistic that the opinion of the people will be at the forefront.
Thank you very much. Then present is Awaiss Kumar, Representative for the Federation of Cultural Community of Nigeria. Awaiss Kumar, are you around? Come forward.
Uh, this is Mr. 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 This speaker, a meeting to sign by this protocol. My name is Awaiss Kumar Usmann, representing the Foundation of Cultural Community based organizations. Foundation of Cultural Community based organizations is a network of community teams agents that are non-partisan, non-profit, across all the before local governmental concepts whose goal are to advocate for good governance, through strengthening collective participation in policy coordination, implementation and trying to ensure effective service delivery and grassroots development. All members, the speakers and gentlemen, in which recall that the National Assembly both over another chapter has passed several bills is ongoing constitutional amendment where a total number of eight votes were made. Now, I'm telling you, but I'm not sure. Now, there are very many discussions. Most of them are due to the use of our language. We don't want to show what we are here to do. Are you going to do it or not? Okay. Mrs. Speaker, as I was saying, uh, this is every were presented by the National Assembly out of which the total number of this which is recovered sixty five percent were passed. Two, which is recovered, three percent were passed with some amendment. Where twenty two, which is also recovered thirty percent other than passed. In this regard, the Foundation of Community based organization, Carrosa, prioritize, have no advantage and also are prepared to Carrosa Assembly for voting in favor of the following bills. Number one, uh, which is the most important of all the bills is the uh, local government permission of government I will not waste my time to know I uh, want some important benefit of this uh, bills because it has been saved by the previous speakers and I know this bill, you know, uh, I have no doubt that us, all the assistants will never throw away this bill. I have that confidence and I convince that Carrosa Assembly will go down. Number nine, financial autonomy, state legislature and judiciary, section one, two, one and two, third. Which is also, uh, the speaker, considering the importance of these two tiers of government that is state legislature and judiciary, uh, if this bill passed into law, it will in no doubt, uh, uh, strengthen the separation of power between the two nations of community in Nigeria. Also, it will provide just, uh, it will improve justice, fairness and equity. It will also provide opportunity for legislative engagement, easy for our side function. Uh, Mrs. Speaker, uh, we have number of this, as I said earlier, I will go to the uh, uh, this bill because of I I told that my my time is one minute left. Uh, traditional rulers are against mission, section one five three, one uh, one nine seven and two, statute which will enhance social coordination, peace, security and progress of the quality in Nigeria. It will also improve locality governance. Uh, Mrs. Speaker, the aforementioned bills if passed into law will provide an eligible environment for just opportunity and also do find represented to continue to also improve security with the boost social economic status of people as localities. It is also technical process of rural urbanization. It will also ease association, good governance and it will admit much needed grassland development in Carrosa and Nigeria. Uh, the speaker, thank you for giving us opportunity to set in this public hearing and I also wish that have more by authority in this Carrosa.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's present the chancellor, Mahameh Sani, Carrosa Central Community Platform. Uh, we're in community, central community platform. So now, I tell you, I'm a Muslim, I'm a Muslim, I'm a Muslim. Uh, input semua kawan, I'm a good character, I'm a good person. Uh, I'm a political guy, I'm a good guy, I'm a good guy, I'm a good guy, I'm a good guy. Uh, the central community platform is an application and an improvement liberalization, development and supporting civil rights obligations that work to expand the use of incentives, uh, continuity tools as a legitimate and effective form of community based monitoring, participation and good governance in Nigeria. Uh, the central community platform works with communities, support governments and services providers who account and encourage community participation and aim to bring our local development for cities within a integrated framework. Honorable speaker, distinguished members, we are here to present our support that the house will support a bill number one of the local government financial autonomy. And of course, support a bill number two on the local government administrative autonomy. Members, the allocation that come from the federal accounts to the local government is also controlled by the state governors. Even though the money does not pass through the office of the governor, as a purpose, the council and the chairman expected to willingly sign up a percentage of their allocation to the governor. Any chairman who refuses to abide by this construction has the state house of assembly to contend with. Local government in this kind of situation suffers double roles, generally the federal government chief or the lower tiers of governments. A distribution of the natural right which is controlled in practice of terms when despite an absolute power of the federal government, the state government prays for a weaker partner without restraint. This is the plight of the local government in the current situation. The current control is on first appointment and the leadership level and surveillance of the local government's financial rights. Distinguished members, your own aware that the means of driving the vote at at local government level is deteriorated in seconds. Community are getting poor like every day due to the lack of mineral jobs and directly nerves of the local councils. Distinguished members, it is all again say that it is very the means more than importance of local governments. That one of them is to make appropriate service and development activities responsive to local wishes and initiatives by the government or the gate of the local representative bodies. Also to facilitate ethos science, democratic self government across the growth of our society and encourage initiative and leadership potentials. Also to mobilization of human and material resources through the involvement of members and public services in the local development. And also to provide a two-way channel of communication between local communities and government, both state and federal government. And also strengthening primary education, improvement in agricultural productivity and improvement in the economic growth layer of the citizens among others. Honorable speaker, distinguished members, from the community of both local governments, we support the change of both local government to like local governments. And we also know that the impact of hearing of naive goes to the to the fairness of the naive as brought by the prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam as he changed a lot of people there because they are bad. That's why we support a bill number four as was supported by the National Assembly. Honorable speaker, we also want to see the house vote in favor of bill number nine for the financial autonomy of the state legislature and state judiciary. As contained in section one hundred and point one and two, statute and also bill number ten on enforcement of the legislative summon on section eight nine and section one hundred and forty nine to grant house its independence and financial autonomy as it was passed in the National Assembly. Also, lastly, speaker, we also refer the committee on reporting in paper of section four, our forty eight, which is summon of president and governors as it was passed by the board National Assembly. Uh, distinguished members, we also want to lobby you to approve bill number fifty S thirty one, seven, section sixty five, one hundred and six, which is in independent privacy to allow more governance and governance in the state. Honorable speaker, distinguished members, we hope our submission will help us how replicate the constitutional amendment. Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, let's present the president of the shot, Mahameh Kumar, representing council of retired sir of service and the barman secretary. Ishad.
Where are you?
Awesome. Okay, good to the rest, speaker, who is represent and presenting Association of Professional Bodies of Nigeria in person of Nigeria, Raheem Aluna. Thank you very much. So, I think local government autonomy in Nigeria is a very important part of this the reason they thought local government could examine the necessity. We see him, we see him very much, a professional agent, who he are understand. Here I discuss some dominant autonomy issues. Yes, we do the projectives, projectives local government, besides local government, very much. We found that impact of autonomy provide to all the issues of course and challenges of local government in the working process within their bodies. In a part autonomy has been found to be different and varied in the challenges. Other than this, we can have a great finances with the government relations placed in office and grand practices. This one we have to protect, local government have more positive profile in their bodies. The particular recommendations are source, local government hand made autonomy. I'm more proud of the civilization, democracy consideration for this correction to increase the stain and application of the law. The definition of local government and Nigerian program is one with more height of doubt that it slightly was theoretically sound and studies of identity. It was a productive council with substantial control over local affairs for providing of studies and presentation of projects in the areas. Complementing activities of both state and federal government, the definition also apply to light the need of local government training and substantial control of local government is aim at stop legislation and financial matters among others in Nigeria. The nation is a whole, the Nigerian federal government is one of the key governments in the world who have achieved for us that have existed local government, state here and local government. I saw you, the state government will not exercise absolute control over local government, which of course of the state. There are so many, there are so many checks and balances that have been neglected by the Nigerian federal government. We see the effective operation of the local government council. So, such checks and balances are a commodity, which is a local government executional to the national constitution. Financial animation of the federal government and the power of local government in passing large of the state governments in the constitution of nineteen ninety. We here have stats, stats different and valid metrics that shows the financial status as compared with local government autonomy. One of these are probably similar features. I'll just go in. There are following local governments in Nigeria in a great autonomy that facilitate the operation of government of localities. They should manage the social life, democratic process, election for the contest of the local government council as well. They should be in line with what was obtained at state and federal government that where elections are carefully conducted. More would be said about democratic consultation, we don't. Article twenty should manifest freely, according to local government areas such as financial interaction of persons who are passive and insufficient in the government markets. The register of a society is more than the key and charity agreed for. Forch local government attorney to recognize article of government attorney when it is granted by a higher government. Article of government attorney will pursue the kinds, alibai, the local government office, article of attorney will be the initial of impact in the areas. In this study, local government attorney to the market system will have independent period and override the practice. Local government finances, three aspects of local government regulation is presentation in our presentation. First is that state government to extend the right to financial regulation to local government as a federal government does. State government should possibly enable all forms of capital to local government regulation, regulation account and the planning represented by name writers to have a more complete in our constitution. At the summit top, I would just jump to our conclusion because of the lack of constitution that are not here. In conclusion, I sustain the essence of local government in Nigeria who should be to imagine how it has been practiced on the local level of us. Localities are being the main focus. This is. So. Okay, the policies have precise metrics that show the importance and value of local government and regulation autonomy. Uh, let's, this is our president, Kuchu Baana, in pass for Abbas.
So, I'm very pleased. I'm so sharing, uh, the English, uh, members and participants. Uh, my name is Raja Isa Abbas and the name of the president, I give care of the party. Uh, the chairman, there are professional accountants, certainly. Quickly, um, I went to clear the business of the chairman that I'm waiting to do and I felt I'll speak both in English and Hosa so that I can round up my presentation. So, yes, also. Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, I need a presentation on local government funds and local government funds administration. Uh, on the local government funds, there is a provision in the approach amendment that, um, term to deal with health for any local government that doesn't have an elected leadership and usually elected leadership. I would also add that we should also have a director of accounting and finance and directors of controlling in each of the local governments, otherwise punishing you to destroy the local governments. This is encourage the local governments to hit the ground running because you push the money and you don't have the right to sign. But again, the money is the thing, the money, the financial transactions, then chances are maybe we end up keeping and holding. Uh, I remember I met with you in a bar, I showered at the bar. Tugah, I remember that so that the group of the women in the bar, they were the one uh, the one who should have been near that I did for this. Tugah, I remember that for him, I remember that so that Lili Ansami who plays directors na accounting and finance do not purchase, I mean, I purchase. Don't be, don't be so, because I mean, it is so wrong, you are so, I mean, yeah. Uh, I have heard that this who I may come back to me now, I'm sorry, uh, benefit some of our activity, but I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I remember that I showered, I remember that for him, I remember that he is angry, he is angry, he is angry, he is angry. So, he is angry, 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 he is angry. I remember that for him, I remember that he is angry, he is angry, he is angry. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I recommend that any man who has been with health because of the failure to have elected leadership should be aware, how do the central bank of Nigeria and should attract an interest input to the Nigeria O two, uh, Interbank O two rates plus zero point eight percent to the real reasons, Mr. Chairman. Uh, number one, so that is described with an animation of this provision. I'm not doing election, it is a separate program of the Nba, so in Nigeria, that is a good thing. So, I remember that, I remember that, I remember that. Someone talk to me, someone tell us that we are not. Don't take you a moment to write it now, because I remember that.